Good evening. At 6:33 PM, we would like to call the February 3, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Both the Vice Chair and the Chair are absent this evening. May we please have a motion and a second to elect a Chairman pro tem to preside over this meeting? Ms. Dean.
I motion for Commissioner Ferguson to chair this meeting.
We have a second?
I'll say.
It's been moved by Commissioner Dean, seconded by Commissioner Strike. Any objections? Hearing none. Commissioner Ferguson will act as Chair over this meeting. Thank you. Ms. Oshimura. Ms. Dean. Here. Mr. Mulcahy. Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Spring.
Here.
Mr. Strike.
Here.
Ms. Barker.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity and introduce our newest Commissioner, Mr. Walker, on the extreme left. It's nice that the Board is up to a full count again. It's been about two years since we've been there. Mr. Walker is a lifelong Alaskan. He has been practicing in the commercial real estate market, and he has a background as an appraiser. He is a graduate of the UAA College, UAA College of Business and Public Policy, and he also has two Bernese Mountain Dogs. I believe that that will lead to some competition on that. May I have a motion to approve the minutes, please? I have a motion by Ms. Dean and seconded by Mr. Robinson. Do I have any objection to approving the minutes? I'll remind the Commissioners that these minutes have a couple controversial issues on them, and they could become the record for that, so I hope everyone's taken a look at it. Seeing no objection, we will have the minutes approved. Ms. Dean, will you do disclosures, please?
I'll start with Commissioner Walker. Do you have anything to disclose?
No.
I do believe you missed some meetings, so there may be some resolutions for approval that you may not be able to vote on. Is that correct? D1A, B, and C?
I thought on disclosures, we did not have to be here, that we could, we would still vote on the disclosures even if we weren't at the meeting.
I'm not sure. I apologize.
Mr. Chair, a Commissioner who's not participated in a case should not vote on the resolution.
Okay. So you would want to withdraw on those two items and on that one?
Okay. Commissioner Spring.
I was not at the meeting in which the case 2012-96 was discussed, and so I won't be voting on the resolution, 2012-40.
And Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes, on the case 2014-011, Three Bears. The petitioner is Kyle Scalise. In the last 15 years, I have probably built five buildings in the total range of $15 million with Mr. Scalise. I was the owner's representative for various owners. He was a contractor's project manager on those, so I have a knowledge of Kyle. I do not have a financial interest in the Three Bears project, and I feel I would be able to vote on those, on that case.
Does anybody on the Commission have any questions? From Commissioner Ferguson, would anybody feel like they need to have a vote on whether he should proceed? Looks like you've been directed to proceed.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Strike? Do you have anything to disclose? And Commissioner Robinson?
Well, it's actually not a case before us, but there's an, on the appearance request, the topic is the Brother Francis Shelter Conditional Use, and I would like to disclose that my company, Cook Inlet Housing Authority, is the owner of that facility. We do not operate it. We lease the building to Catholic Social Services. Don't know if that means I should relieve myself of the conversation, or simply it's, if it's just an appearance request with no action associated with it, sure how to sort of take that.
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson. As no action of the Commission is required, there's no reason to leave the room.
If the rest of the Commission's okay with that, then I'll participate.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Barker?
Yes, thank you. I was not present for the first two items on the consent agenda when they were first heard, so I should not be voting on those. And also on item number five, I just wanted to disclose that my employer is the organization that sponsors Karlek Manor, the Royal Alaska Community Action Program. It's not my part of the agency, but I am employed by the agency.
So are you a substantial part of the action? No?
I would not consider myself to be, but I am employed by the agency, participate as part of the agency's executive management team.
Do you directly or substantially change the outcome on this project?
No.
Do you significantly change your monetary status on this project? Would it cover anything?
No.
Does anybody have any objections to Commissioner Barker hearing this case?
Yes, I do. I mean, I think as a member of leadership in that organization, she should not be participating on a case by that, by her employer in this case.
Shall we vote?
We need a motion.
I move to direct Commissioner Barker to participate in the discussion of case 2014-021.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. I simply, I feel...
We have a second.
I feel that Ms. Barker's employer bringing a case in front of us is such that I, while there's no financial interest, I believe it's enough of a conflict, and I will not be supporting the motion.
Can we all vote?
Do we have any other comments before we vote? Okay, this motion will be to direct, Ms. Barker, to participate. The motion went down to defeat, so that means Ms. Barker will not be participating in that So I guess at that point, Ms. Barker, we ask that you reclude yourself to make sure we're totally correct, please. Thank you.
And I have nothing to disclose, but I do have one issue for our temporary Chair. D1A only has four people that can approve that resolution, so we don't have enough votes to approve, correct?
What would be staff's recommendation? Do we want to just pull that until we have enough people to vote on it?
Yes, Mr. Chair, you'll need to pull it and postpone it to, or just not vote on it, and it'll come up to the next agenda next week.
Okay. At that point, then, the Chair would welcome a motion to pull item D1A and pull item D4A from the consent agenda. Well, now wait a minute. We've got to be careful here. What about five? We'd have to pull five?
Five, Sophie.
What do you want me to do? I'm getting a TND lesson on the computer up here. Does that, how about on issue five? I would like to pull, I'd like to, the Chair would welcome a motion to pull items D1A, D4A, and 5A from the consent agenda.
Since our system is locked up, if you want me to continue here?
I...
You're looking for a motion, Mr. Chair?
I'm looking for a motion to pull those three items.
I move that we pull D1A, D1C, 4A, and 5A from the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor of pulling those, or wait, wait, pardon me, they don't, we don't need that, do we? We pulled them, right?
Support the motion.
Okay. Was your motion to approve the consent, the remainder of the consent agenda?
Okay. As one, as one motion, I move to approve the consent agenda. You want me to pull them now? Jim broke the computer.
You keep it up when I'm walking out the door, you've got a problem real quick. Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and after we get that passed, we will come back and we will pull the other items? I think we pull the items first.
Not right now, but something, I don't know what vote is going on.
I'm not logged out. I think we pull the items and pass the consent agenda. That's what we've done in the past. Let's pull the, pull the items you want, make a motion to pull those items, we'll vote on that, then we'll vote on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Okay, so you want my motion again?
Yes, please.
My move to pull consent agenda items D1A, D1C, 4A, and 5A.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to address the motion.
Please do.
Can I have clarification why the motion maker wants to pull 5A? It seems like we have enough Commission members to...
I asked to pull that because I'm trying to give Ms. Barker the opportunity to leave the meeting while we discuss that one item, because she's reclusive from that item, and I would like her input on the other items.
Okay, and we could discuss it then once we pull?
Yes, yes, that was my only intent. Okay? Mr. Robinson, do you have any other discussion on your item? Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing none, that is passed.
Move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. D1B, I believe.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a second. This will approve resolution D1B, a minor amendment to a conditional use in the planning, planned community district T on case 2013-153. Do we have any discussion on that? Seeing none, we will, we will consider that one approved. Okay, we will take the pulled items from the consent agenda, and then we'll come back to you, Stacy. We pulled item D1A, which is case 2012-096. Mr. Robinson, would you care to talk, speak to that motion?
Yeah, in the matter of resolution 2012-040 related to case 2012-096, I move to postpone this resolution until we have a quorum, or enough people to vote on it.
Okay.
Do I need to state a specific meeting?
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson, I don't even think you can postpone it by motion because you don't have enough people to vote on it, so I think it just goes to the next agenda automatically.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, can we talk about case 2014-002, case 2014-008? That was pulled also.
Yeah, move to approve resolution 2014-002 related to case 2014-008. There's a second there. The reason I pulled it is, on the findings, numbers four and five, I guess it's just not clear to me that these findings were made because it's a very, it's a generic conditional use that's being proposed for this, this type of utility substation. And I believe our conversation, at least with Assemblymember Starr, was that with a lack of actual conditions, it's going to make hearing these types of cases difficult, that we won't have clear standards from which to judge this type of conditional use. So my question really is to staff, is your intent to provide any recommendations? And the reason we didn't have any specific recommendations is it simply was, you know, brought to us with very short notice. But my question to staff is, do you intend to accompany this resolution with any suggestions, or is it just Mr. Starr's to carry at the, at the Assembly level, and then we're left to deal with a vague conditional use permit?
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson, I'm the bearer of unfortunate news, which is that this ordinance passed the Assembly last Tuesday night.
Oh, there you go. So when it comes before us, we'll have to mess around with no clear standards for utility substation, correct?
Or you can propose some standards. I mean, propose an ordinance amendment that would create standards for this use.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Think probably calling the questions in order.
Any other comments? All in favor? Any objection? Okay, it passed. Consent agenda item 4A, Ravens Roost Cohousing. Could staff tell us what they know about this, just a way of some background, please?
Through the Chair, Mr. Ferguson. The case has been withdrawn.
And it's my understanding that this was withdrawn on the applicant's choice and will maybe or maybe not reappear before us.
Correct.
Okay. Any objection? I don't know what we can do if it's been pulled, so it's been pulled. All right. Ms. Barker, we're going to discuss case 5A. You've been reclusive, so you are excused. Walk fast, or we will be done by the time you get out the door. Case D5A, this is not a public hearing. This is on the consent agenda. The reason I asked to pull it was to allow Ms. Barker to participate in the other ones. Anybody have any comments in regard to this, this item? Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I appreciate the effort to go through the survey, and I guess, I don't know if we have an opportunity to have questions to the representatives here or just with staff. I'm not sure what this is. We're simply just accepting a, an annual review. We're not taking any action on the basis of a conditional use permit, but just, just looking at the review and whether that review meets the requirements of the conditional use. Is that right?
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson. That's correct. It's very narrow. However, you can ask questions of staff or the petitioner. They're, they're in the audience and available to respond to questions.
So just a couple of comments. Number one, you know, as I, as I read the survey, it does look like things are, at least the general opinion is trending positively, although that doesn't speak, I think, to everybody. I do want to sort of make a comment here, and for any of those in the public, that the supplemental comments that we received here were laid on the table literally three minutes before the meeting started. So I am, I am accepting this review without frankly having read these comments here. I would like to clarify, though, I can't tell if these are multiple comments, and every place where there's a, there's a date, it's somebody else, or it's one comment from one individual. Could you please clarify?
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson. My guess is that, so Mr. Aleva provided these public comments today, and I think that there may be a copy and paste of comments that were submitted during the first review when Karlek Manor was approved a few years ago.
Okay, but in other words, it's, it's, it's not indicating that these are other people that have submitted comments. It was a little unclear to me. This is from one person, whether, whether they're taking somebody else's comments and reposting them here. That's what's going on.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, the only comment I have, or question I have to, to the operator, the petitioner, is, is I think, I believe the survey sort of meets the definition of what they're required to do on an annual basis, and I'm prepared to accept it. My question is, especially as we contemplate new housing first facilities and those sorts of things in our community, I wonder if there's ever any analysis on whether, you know, we always build these facilities as saving the public money because of reduced emergency visits, calls to service, and all of those sorts of things. Is there any metric or way, and the burden is likely not all on you, it would require the participation of others in the community, but is there any way to measure that, to know how we're doing related to the, the public costs?
Hello, my name is Melinta Freeman, and I'm the Director of the Supportive Housing Division for Rural Cap and oversee this project. There is a way to measure the efficacy of this program. UAA's Institute of Circumpolar Health Studies is the formal research body that was hired by Alaska Housing Finance Corporation and the Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority to conduct a two-year research project on the Karlek Manor Housing First Facility, as well as the South Cushman Program in Fairbanks. In addition to that, we analyze every call of concern that comes into Karlek Manor, as well as all of the emergency calls that are generated from Karlek Manor, and we have an analysis of the purpose of every call and the number of every call, and the resolution to the call.
So is there, you have that information, and therefore you can conclude?
Yes, well, we have anecdotal information about how many calls were generated in the first year and the second year, and then we have the formal research that is being conducted. And then the formal research will be researching the types of emergency calls and the cost of those different interventions from emergency services before people moved into Karlek Manor, and the follow-up with how long they've lived there and how many calls have been generated. So then we can extrapolate from that, if the research is able to do that, the reduction in costs.
I see, and that, and that research is not completed at this time?
No, it's not completed. It's a two-year study, and we're just going into our third year of operation.
Great. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Mr. Spring, please.
Yeah, I'll be sorry, I asked this question, I think, but we're, I guess we're required to review the financial statement as part of the requirements.
Yes.
To tell you the truth, I can't really figure out what the, I can't figure out heads or tails from this budget report myself. I don't know if anybody else had trouble. I see that there's a surplus, $8,000 surplus, but I'm trying to add up these numbers, and I can't tell which numbers to add up, and it seems like that's our responsibility. That's the only reason I'm asking.
Mm-hmm.
We're supposed to receive this report and verify that it's okay, and I can't do that very soon. I'm sure it's correct, but I just can't figure it out.
You'd like some further explanation on?
Yes.
Okay. Debbie?
Ms. Dean?
Or Kenny? Go ahead.
Are they going to answer it now? Okay.
Hi, I'm Debbie Green. I'm the Budget Coordinator. This report is actually processed for reporting purposes to the HFC. They want to see how their grants are being spent and how the rent is being spent, the rent that we're collecting, how that's being spent on supportive services and operating costs, and also how much revenue we can generate through other sources, and how that's paying for those costs as well. So at the bottom line, when you see an operating gap, all that's saying is that the rent does not cover the operating costs, and we need the grants in order to cover those now, right You see a surplus because we're on the right-hand side, where you see Medicaid damages, Karlek Manor donations. Once we add those revenues to the cost, then we have a surplus. They want to see if we need their money, if we need the grant money, and how much, and then if we have a surplus once we count those other revenues.
I understand. So what is the total expenses, then?
The total expenses, yearly expenses, you would have to add the, it's almost $964,000.
Which ones, which lines do you have?
This is a semi-annual report that I gave you.
What do I add up to get the total expenses? Am I talking, we're talking about page six is the budget? That's the budget we're looking at?
Page six, yes. You would add up the period expenses?
$303,000.
Right. Plus the period expenses for the supporting costs as well. You have operating costs and supportive costs.
$164,000.
Yes. And then just last week, I did another semi-annual report, which you don't have in your, your handout. So you would have to add these two semi-annual reports.
Okay, and we compare it to what? What's the income, then, that we compare it to?
The income, the total income, with grants and rent, to compare it, to get the difference. Oh, the grants are $50,000, where it says paid through SNHG.
Where's the grant?
The grant money on the first column is paid through SNHG on the operating cost.
Oh, that's...
That's grant money.
Grant money, okay.
Right. That would be the $50,000 plus the $164,000 supportive costs.
$164, okay.
Right. The rent money is on the top portion.
Excuse me? Oh, the, then you add the rent portion?
Right.
Which is $126,000?
Plus $57,000.
Plus $57?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And plus the section eight, so there's three up there that you add, plus the $50,000.
Yes.
So it's four, four sources of income, then?
Correct. Plus, all the way over on the right-hand side, you see Medicaid damages and Karlek Manor donation. You would add those all as revenue as well.
$99,000?
Yes.
You'd add that, too? So there's five income sources, then?
Yes.
And you subtract that from the two, the two expense columns?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Through the Chair, on page eight of the packet, there is the quick fact sheet. Would you say that 57% of the people suggest that there is an increase in the number of homeless individuals gathered on street corners? Would you say that? That's what it says to me in your...
Right, and I would agree with that. I mean, my name is Kenny Scollin, I'm the Division Manager, and I'm over at Karlek Manor. The amount of individuals on the street has increased. There, there's a lot of reasons for that. I mean, we have higher cost of living, more people becoming homeless, we've, we've seen through Karlek Manor, we've seen two generations in Karlek Manor. It's unfortunate, but the, the number of homeless are increasing on the street, so I think it's a good case for another Karlek Manor. Not that I'm pushing, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Strike? Yeah, I believe that what's before us is a review, and a review of the annual neighborhood search. we review the financial statements or presented. I may be missing something, but I don't see a financial statement. I see an interim, I see us adding numbers down here, while you add this number and this number to come up with an annual, but I'm not seeing an annual financial statement. Has one been prepared?
Do you mean agency financial statement, or just for this project?
An annual financial statement for 2013 for this project.
One can be provided?
I believe that's the purpose of the meeting, why we're here today, is to review a 2013 financial statement and to review the survey.
We submit semi-annual reports to the Planning Department, so if you would like an annual recap of that, or we can submit, I mean, we continue to submit information to the Planning Department. So if you want us to reconfigure that into an annual one, we can certainly do that and submit it.
I guess I wouldn't view it as a reconfigure. I would view it as, that's part of the stipulation requirement for the conditional use, was that every three years, there would be a review of the annual financial statement for 2013. It's been three years. I'm not sure that we're ready to have an act on this particular item.
Staff, have any comment on that?
Well, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Strang, it's true that the financial statement submitted is over a six-month period, it's not a one-year period. Carlock Manor is pretty dependent on guidance from staff on, you know, what they need to provide in order for, to meet their requirements in front of the Commission. When Carlock Manor contacted our office, said, you know, "What do you need?", and I said, "We need the financial statement, this is provided", it appeared that this met the requirements. You know, the way that they provide these are semi-annual, it doesn't fall perfectly on the fiscal year. This seemed to satisfy the requirement, but I think that, you know, they're more than willing to oblige with anything that the Commission needs in terms of a financial statement. They'll put the two together and make it a pretty spreadsheet for you, provide it at the next meeting, if that's what the Commission desires.
Well, I don't think it's a matter, through the Chair, I don't believe it's a matter of trying to make it pretty. I think it's a matter of making sure that, you know, I'm all for the Carlock Manor, I appreciate everything that they've done, but it was a lot of public testimony that took place that brought forth this manner. It, there was concessions made, there were stipulations made, conditional use, I believe, gone through. I'm just asking that we respect the parties in the process, that we hold to some of that conditional use requirement, and we do what we say that we were going to do.
Through the Chair, Mr. Strang, the Commission will reconvene next Monday. I'm sure that the budget folks can prepare a, I guess, all of 2012's or 2013 to this point. If you could provide guidance on what you'd like to see as meeting the intent of an annual financial statement, you know, I'm sure that the budget person can, Debbie can prepare it for you.
And I'm reading from the background information as provided by staff in our packets. And as part of the annual administrative review, and the every third year, planning and zoning review, the operator of the Carlock Manor shall include its financial statements to show adequate funding exists to meet the requirements of the management plan as part of the conditional use. That's not present. Only two items that we're here to look at were the financial statements and the survey. So I guess I would, is it appropriate to make a motion that we...
I would ask that we've got one more in the queue, maybe we listen to one more in the queue, and then I will probably ask for direction from the body, and at that point, you're free to make a motion.
If I may?
Yes, I'd like to follow up on that, too. The, I guess, in trying to meet our obligation, it says that we need to make sure that the financial plan is fulfilled, and that the management plan is funded. And you have a list of the services here, but I don't have any paper that tells me what the approved management plan was, or did I miss something in my packet. So I can't compare what was approved as a management plan with the funding that's listed in the sheet here, which makes it really difficult to make sure that we do our, meet our responsibility under the ordinance that was adopted. Is there, there is a management plan, I'm assuming that was approved?
There is, yes.
And I'm sure that this meets it. You list transportation, well, no money, housekeeping, life skills is probably part of it. It says case management, I guess there's no case management, because I see no money expense there. Education, employment services, other mediation services. So if we go where I think we're going, which we want more information regarding the financial plan, I would like to also have, you submit a management plan along with it, so we can compare, see that it's funded.
I'd like to ask one question, and give this some thought before you answer. You've got, I think, a drift of what direction the board is headed. Is it reasonable to expect that information back in one week, or will you need more time to comply with that information meaningful? I would rather get good information a little bit later than, I mean, next week, I mean, we meet in March, too. So when do you think you could have information available to us that would meet with Mr. Strang and Mr. Spring's comments?
And what period of time would you like to see?
I'll let you, I'll let you determine that.
Well, we determined it the last time, and I guess, actually, it wasn't what you wanted to see.
Oh, you're asking for, I would say, I think...
We're looking for annual financial statements.
A calendar year?
Yeah, see, we don't work on a calendar year, we work on a fiscal year, so...
What's your fiscal year? What's your fiscal year?
It's October 1st through September 30th.
There you go. Could we have one for October 2012 through September 2013?
Yes.
And when could you have that information?
By next week, one week, yes.
Okay. What's the choice of the Commission?
I believe there was a motion on the table initially, but I would accept a movement to postpone.
Okay. Can I have a movement to postpone, can I have a motion to move to postpone, then?
I would make the motion to postpone. I would make a motion to postpone, case 2014-021, until such time as we have the financial statements presented through the period October 31st, is that what?
October 1st.
1st.
October 1st.
October 1st, through October 1st.
October 1st, to meet their fiscal year.
Could, I don't know what the agenda looks like next week, but I'd like to make it to a specific date. So February 17th, does that look okay?
Mr. Chair, February 17th is, you mean the 10th?
The 10th, I'm sorry, you are correct, thank you. Okay, we have a motion to postpone case 2014-21 to 2017. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Dean?
Mr. Chair, I move to push a change in the schedule for case H1, which is an appearance request by Ron Aliva regarding the Brother Francis Shelter conditional use. I move to move that to the next case.
Any objection?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Would staff, please, yes, invite Ms. Parker to come back? Mr. Aliva, would you like to come up and address the body? Before you get started, sir, you have five minutes on the appearance request, and we know what your subject is, and we ask that you stick to your subject. Because of the rules of our body, you cannot address a subject that's on our agenda before us. So I've got your comments on Carlock Manor, but because of the luck of the draw, Carlock Manor happened to be on the same night that your appearance request was, I would ask that you not discuss Carlock Manor while you're discussing Brother Francis Shelter.
I understand that, and, you know, conditional uses are conditional uses, but I won't mention Carlock Manor. In fact, it puts a bad taste in my mouth to think about it.
I appreciate your handling of that, sir. You have five minutes in the body?
All right. Well, good evening. This is in reference to the conditional use granted to the Brother Francis Shelter, and I can go into history, but if you know who I am, I'm the adjacent property owner, and I'm also one of the originators with Brother Bob, Brother Dave, and, hey, Jim Calderola, 30, 35 years ago. A member of the 500 Club of the Brother Francis Shelter, a donor, and went to church there, and my wife made banana bread, and we were basically big supporters. But this was not the appropriate location, not because it was in my backyard. It was a heavy industrial property, seismic zone 5, on a truck route, on a hill, with no signal crosswalks from Reeve Boulevard to Cordova. Because the native hospital was there, it seemed like an appropriate place, because they were having issues, and the largest population of the Brothers Francis Shelter happened to be native at that time. And in selecting a new location, unfortunately, they did a survey, which I, as the adjacent property owner, didn't get a copy of. But they said 88% of the people recommended that site. And I found it outrageous, they wouldn't talk to the neighbor, but they would recommend that site, and not do due diligence in finding another site, an alternative site, which was the site on Elmore, the home of the animal shelter. So Catholic Social Services, for some reason, did that to the most vulnerable population, but put dogs and cats behind the police station, close to the hospital, on a bus route, close to API, and close to the university, with enthusiastic students to study or basically help out. But staying focused on the conditional use, I just got the letter, and it said that you have no authority to enforce it. Well, I've been misled, not only by the Catholic Church, but also by the Chairman Jones, that if something went wrong, you would revisit this conditional use. Well, the three conditions that they haven't really adjusted to, and the most important thing, is when they bring you the biannual report, that it be a public hearing. Because I sued the Brother Francis Shelter, because on the annual, our two-year report, Susan Bo Malansky did a dance up here around the questions, I thought she drank a gallon of coffee. She never reported the negative impact. She supported other conditional uses that increased the pedestrian traffic, which is a hazard, not only to the clients, but to the truckers, and with more people using Third Avenue coming in from Eagle River, the populations have increased. Now, the garbage pickup is actually a joke, because I put 2,000 plastic vodka bottles, whiskey bottles on my fence, and those were only the plastic ones. And that was very sad, a little crustal art, but it was still a message that they were not addressing these issues. But we can go back to the negative impact. Hey, my assessment went down $100,000. One of the neighbors, he's had his property for sale for five years, at assessment, unable to sell it. So it does have a negative impact there. But last Wednesday, I was robbed, and they say they pick up the garbage and have these patrols, while over 4,000 to 5,000 of my tools was spread out, oh, probably about 50 yards, within 50 feet of the shelter's property. And they say they go out on patrols and pick it up. Well, with witnesses of three police officers, we not only went and picked up my stolen goods, fecal material again was found, bottles, garbage, and it was the same old, same old. Yet, they'll come and tell you they're doing a perfect job. Well, I can tell you, they're not telling you the truth. And I have evidence, because I basically sued them myself, because it's prohibitive, cost prohibitive for businessmen, if not economic suicide, to sue a homeless shelter in a soup kitchen. And I didn't want the money. $30,000 was a slap on the roof, but I had to give it back. What I'm requesting tonight is that you not accept that they met the terms of the conditional use, and Mr. Weaver will not allow the conditional use to continue. There has to be some sort of punishment or restriction if they don't approve it, regardless of what he or the Planning Department says is acceptable. It's not acceptable to the neighborhood. And I'm sorry, I don't have enough time to tell you that. The Fairview Community Council's memorandum of understanding of agreement, that's not even legal. So if you have any questions, I'm calm, and I can count to 10 first. Fire away.
You're doing very well, sir, I appreciate that, and I thank you very much.
Sure.
We have some questions up here.
Sure.
Then we'll go from there. Ms. Dean?
I have a question of staff, through the Chair. Could you tell us what process it would be that we would need to go through in order to review the Brother Francis Shelter conditional use permit? If we were to bring it back, what process would we need to, in order for the Commission to review the guidelines for the conditional use permit? And secondly, what would we need to do if we wanted to add additional requirements to that conditional use permit? And then, third, what if we decide that they haven't met the original requirements of the conditional use permit? What do we need to do at that point? Thank you.
Through the Chair, Ms. Dean. The code gives only the applicant the authority to request an amendment to a conditional use. There is nothing that the Planning and Zoning Commission can do to force a conditional use to come back before you. Generally, when, in the past, when we have seen conditional uses where the applicant has had trouble meeting the conditions of approval, they have either, complaints will have been made, enforcement officers will work with the applicant, for lack of a better word, to resolve their problems, and they either come into compliance with their conditions, or they apply to amend their conditions. And it is that second situation where it could come back before the Commission for modification. But again, the code gives that power only to the applicant to come back to have the conditional use changed.
So let me make sure I understand you correctly, that there has to be complaints in order for us to have a review of their conditional use permit triggered. Is that correct?
The applicant must choose to request an amendment to their conditional use, which they can do with or without complaints. We sometimes see it when there have been complaints, and they haven't been able to meet a condition.
I don't understand what you're saying. I'm asking to see if we could review, what do we need to do to review their conditional use permit at this time? Anything?
To modify it.
No, just to review it?
To look at it. To look at it.
Yeah. To review it, to discuss it, to have a public hearing?
There's nothing that the commission can do to initiate a public hearing on a conditional use that has been approved.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is a question for the staff. Can a conditional use be sunsetted? That mean, put a stipulation at the time a conditional use is requested, such that it automatically expires at a certain date, thereby forcing the applicant to come back before the commission?
That is a common condition on natural resource extraction conditional uses. So yes, that could happen.
And that would be one form or fashion that this commission then thereby could have, not oversight, but have visibility to the process and have that applicant come back forth before the commission to ensure that the stipulations from the previous year have been adhered to.
Yes.
Mr. Leva, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
And the first question appears simple, but it's not. Have you filed any complaints with the city about Brother Francis Shelter, and how did you do that?
Well, ad nauseam, I've filed complaints with the Aud Budsmen, the Department of Health, with the mayor, with Code Enforcement. It said in the memo it didn't, but I did. I've gone to every agency, including the DEC, because of the fecal material. I actually went to planning, well, back here, if this isn't a complaint of 1,305 calls of assault, trespass, and disorderly conduct that Susan Bommelonsky admitted to, I want to bring that forward as evidence that that doesn't seem like they're mitigating anything. But to answer your question, yes, I went to every agency there could, and I went to every board, from the Heritage Land Bank to their board, Catholic Social Services, to Bean's Board. Listen, the dispatchers know me by my first name.
I recognize that and understand, this is going to sound like I'm from, you know, I'm from the IRS and I'm here to help you, sir. But what I would sincerely request or suggest is that the counting system that works in this system is the phone calls to Code Enforcement, 343-4141. And I understand what you told me, and I accept is what, that you called them, but I would recommend, is this thing works its way through, works its way forward, I would recommend you keep a log on what, if you call it every day, keep a log, have your neighbors keep a log. Because I believe what possibly could be happening is someone is saying, well, he's complaining about the tenants at Brother Francis Shelter, not the property involved, and therefore it is getting shunted off to every other direction. So I'm trying to offer some advice here, that call Code Enforcement and make a log, have a written log.
Sure.
Just hang tight for a minute. Ms. McConnell, I believe the last time Mr. Leva was here, we asked for a report. Can you give us the status on that report, please?
Through the chair, or, Mr. Chair, when Mr. Leva was here in September, you did ask us to answer some questions, and we did email memo of response, memo of response to those questions, and Mr. McLaughlin is handing out a hard copy of those answers.
Yeah, that was the January 28th email?
Yes.
I believe that part of the breakdown and the communications on this thing has to do with Code Enforcement. And I also see that the applicant, Brother Francis Shelter, is on our list for a appearance request at the next meeting. Could we schedule for March, have a session with Code Enforcement? And would you notify both Mr. Leva and Brother Francis Shelter that we're here to, we're going to ask Code Enforcement questions, we're not here with that one specifically? But could we do that in March, please?
Mr. Chair, I will work to make that happen, and perhaps at the same time, we could provide the conditional use standards that were placed upon Brother Francis for everybody to look at.
I would appreciate that at one time. Thank you very much. Mr. Walker, you have a question? Questions?
Well, I attempted to withdraw the request, but I'll ask the question anyway through the chair for the staff. So I think Ms. Leva came here looking for help today, and it seems, based on what you said, Erica, that we cannot provide that help. And I think Ms. Dean's question seemed to be directed at how we might act to help, you know, to provide some relief to what appears to be an inopportune situation for you. So what action or what actions can Mr. Leva take, other than just continually calling Code Enforcement over and over and over again? Is there something that we've missed here, a question that hasn't been asked?
Through the chair, Mr. Walker. I know my little piece of my world, and I don't necessarily know all the options that are available to Mr. Leva, although it does sound from his testimony that he's availed himself of talking to a variety of agencies. I would encourage him to continue calling the Code Enforcement hotline. It's, you know, he's said that he has done this, and the information that they give me says we don't have any complaints listed. And so I cannot explain that discrepancy, and hopefully, as Mr. Ferguson has directed, we can get some clarification on that next month. One of the requirements of the Brother Francis Shelter conditional use is to come back for a public hearing. Okay, I'm sorry, to come back for a review every two years, and they are up for their review in June. And I think the commission, you know, under the appearance request, the commission also has the ability to make, the issue that is raised in the appearance request can make a conditional, I'm sorry, a public hearing on that issue. So the commission could hold a public hearing on the issue of Brother Francis Shelter, although, again, you would have no authority to change the conditional use requirements. So that would kind of raise awareness, start a community discussion, that is an option for you. Mr. Leva could also submit comments in June, at the time of the Brother Francis biannual review, that will be submitted to you.
Anything else, Mr. Walker? Mr. Spring?
Yes, Ms. Leva. As Commissioner, I'm interested in making sure that the conditions of approval that the Planning and Zoning Commission makes as part of this process are carried out. And sometimes I see that happening, sometimes I don't. And I'm just curious what you think, what conditions you think haven't been met by the Brother Francis Shelter that are contained in the actual conditional use?
Well, the most important one is an accurate representation to this commission, an admission that if you have 1,305 calls to your location for assault, for disorderly conduct, and basic theft, I think you haven't mitigated a possible impact even on your own property. Their executive director stole $9,200. Susan Bommelonsky called it chaos. But she did not come here and give you that data.
I don't think you're answering my question.
Okay, I'll try to clarify.
Was that in the conditions of approval?
Yes, it was. Because it was supposed to address the neighborhood impact. And what kind of action did she take to mitigate that kind of calls to the Brother Francis Shelter for those kinds of crimes? And let me compare it to taking this to the assembly. They closed down the Run Rubbers on 27 calls. They closed it down. When the cathedral kicked out the homeless and said it was the inlet-in, they closed that pace and crushed it. But when you have this many calls to the shelter, 1,305, the Black Angus had only 309 and were fined $28,000, they're not coming forward and being honest with you. And the same thing is, when they go ahead on the crosswalks, they had to address the pedestrian crosswalks. Lance, with Transit, whatever reason, they never mitigated or offered solutions, a tunnel, a bridge, to get people across without signals. There's only a flashing light on a hill. Two people got killed going down the hill, one person up the hill. It's dangerous. And then the garbage, why wouldn't they tell you? Do you realize it was my suggestion, and I have to thank Mr. Potter, because I passed it on, the garbage can outside their facility, they wouldn't touch it? And it was overflowing of trash. It was terrible. And he suggested someone should adopt that trash can. Well, I thought it belonged to the shelter, but it didn't. It belonged to Transit, and Transit had to empty it. So in answering your question, they don't do anything. They're protected by a moral veil, and they do not tell the truth to what they are supposed to be doing with those conditional uses. It's not even close.
I share, I just want to follow up. I share your concerns about those impacts, but I'm not sure, I can't imagine that the commission would have made conditions of approval, which could be enforced by the zoning enforcement, saying that you won't have any garbage outside, your clients will never throw garbage outside the confines of the Brother Francis Shelter, and they will never act in such a manner that they'll have to call the police. I mean, these aren't conditions of approval that we would make on this case. I don't see that, though you have legitimate concerns, I don't see that that's an enforceable action by the zoning code.
Well, they addressed that in many of the minutes, but it is enforceable, because they have to take responsibility for the actions of their clients. And they always cry, poor boy. But Bishop's Attic, another Catholic agency, and I'm born and raised Catholic, my wife's a big Catholic, hey, they make $300,000 a year profit there. $300,000.
We're getting office.
Well, I know, but I'm saying they have the financial resources. But they'll come and tell you, oh, we only have one monitor at night for 371 people because we don't have the finances. And it just doesn't make sense to me. And if you ask for a financial statement, take a look at it. Bean's Cafe is $2 million. Pick, live, and give. These people are, they're running a pretty good con, is what they're doing. And as far as those conditional uses, common sense would tell you, if your garbage can came over, and it's on my side of the fence, and I said, hey, your garbage can's over here, and your garbage, would you come and get it? And guess what?
Ron, will you please sum ice?
Well, I'll summarize, the garbage can's still there. I asked them to come and get it. Why wouldn't they come and get their own garbage?
Okay, do I have any further questions? We will be getting more information in March. We're trying to work our way through it. Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, you're welcome, and I hope you make it a public hearing, because it would be very, very helpful. Hey, enjoy the packet.
Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Fine.
Okay, the next case before us is case 2014001. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The petitioner requests a rezone Benson subdivision block one, the west half of lot two, from R2M multifamily residential district to B3 general business district. The parcel is economically linked to the neighboring parcel to Benson subdivision block one, lot one, has been for many years. These two parcels are treated as a single parcel by the municipal assessor's office, even though they have different zoning designations. The petitioner is proposing to rezone this parcel to B3 to match the other parcel. The intention is to redevelop the site as one. They have an application pending to replat the property, consolidate the two lots together. The two lots together will be, will allow for a 5,400 square foot office building to be constructed. Let's see, the half lot was created by warranty deed in 1975. It's a substandard lot. The chair, the Spinnard Community Council, provided community council comment, it's on page 38 of your packet. This request for a rezone complies with standards for a rezone, including compliance with the comprehensive plan, the West Anchorage District Plan, and the Spinnard Community, the Spinnard Community District Development, no, I see, oh, wait, the Spinnard Commercial Corridors The department's recommending approval of the rezone, and a draft ordinance is on page seven of your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the petitioner's here as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, we've got a problem. Before the petitioner comes up, I will remind everyone, I'm trying to find my notes, the petitioners, including his or her representatives, have 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representative groups, community council, PTAs, et cetera, have five minutes, and individuals have three minutes. Mr. Walker, I understand you may have a potential conflict on this issue.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just noticed that Steve Agnew's presenting for the applicant, and he and I know each other personally, we've worked together in the past, but I have no financial interest in this case, and I'm not a stakeholder.
You have no financial interest, and you feel you can vote fairly and openly on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Will the petitioner please come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Steve Agnew. I am representing the petitioner owner, Justin Green. The land we are discussing this evening is a small deed lot. It's about 4,700 square feet. It's a deed parcel that goes back to 1975, when a single conveyance conveyed the adjacent lot one, and in their wisdom, they split it in half and conveyed the west half of lot two. That's what we're here to discuss tonight, that west half of lot two. As the staff report pointed out, this land has been considered one economic unit by the assessor for a number of decades now. It has, in fact, been part of a commercial activity and use. The primary lot one had a small building on it that was no longer of any useful life. The petitioner, at some expense, removed that building, removed an eyesore from the neighborhood, and is now proposing to upgrade this particular lot. As staff pointed out, it's in conformance with the Spinnard Community District Plan, and as noted in the packet, the West Anchorage Plan has always considered this property as a commercial property. So we're, in essence, making a technical correction here. We appreciate the staff's review and support of our application, not just because of this project, but I would, you know, suggest to you that in Anchorage, we're going to be seeing a lot of this kind of activity. Over the years, we know there's Over the years, we know there's not any of these large tracts of land left, and we're going to be repurposing and recycling land into higher and better uses. And ultimately, where following the comprehensive plans and the district plans that apply, we'll find that sometimes there'll be rezonings to forward those redevelopment plans. And so that's the history, that's our explanation. We would appreciate your support, and I would reserve remaining time for any questions or rebuttal. One more thing, if I may, sir. We did get to meet with the community council. I believe some of their folks are here tonight, and while they, of course, had some comments and questions, I believe at the end of the night, they did, in fact, support this plan. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. Through the Chair, I think you've seen that there's kind of two elements of the comp plan that sort of addressed this area, the West Anchorage Plan more recently, and then back in the 80s, the Spinard Community District Development Strategy, that I think one of the sole purposes of which was to sort of encourage these types of rezonings with some of the odd shapes of lots and those sorts of things, but to do so recognizing that it's a mixed-use area, you're going to have some commercial, and you're going to have some residential, and how those interfaces is actually going to be considered on a case-by-case basis, is the language in the plan. One of the things that it talks about, it says, you know, it says areas, these transition areas are defined as areas of potential commercial district expansion, limited expansion in a residential zone by commercial uses along Spinard Road. If proper buffering and screening is provided, proposals are to be considered on a case-by-case basis. Can you address, and we don't have a development plan or a site plan in front of us, and I sort of recognize that you're replacing a building that's out of, you know, that's useful life, and you're onto something else. What are your plans for buffering adjacent to the residential properties?
The plan calls for 10-foot buffer landscaping in accord with the ordinance between the residential land to the, we'll call it Plan East, and the parking lot in the small office building. You have the Old Barrett's Best Western, I don't remember what they call it now, but, you know, Lodging to the North, Spinard Road to the West, Aspen Road to the South, and then to the east is a remaining residential lot that we will buffer.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Spring?
Yeah, regarding buffering, and I was interested, I didn't realize that the statement said buffering and screening type of treatment. Is there, did I see that there's existing fence on that east side?
I don't believe there is a, what we would consider a screening fence. I can't recall. I do know there's a screening fence between the Barrett's or the Lodging to the North, but to the east, sir, I can't recall. And we can put in one of those fences.
Oh, that's good. My concern is the parking lot, probably. You'll be having parking perpendicular to the eastern boundary, so when we have night, a lot here, so a lot of lights will be probably shining through that buffering area onto the residential, and I personally believe that fences help at least screen the light from intruding on the adjacent property.
Any other questions? You have 7 minutes and 10 seconds, sir, for your rebuttal. Okay, does anyone else wish to testify? Anyone else wish to testify on this issue? Would you please come forward and state your name?
My name is Robert Auth, A-U-T-H, and I'm the Chair of the Spinard Community Council. I also live in the neighborhood.
Are you speaking in behalf of the?
I'm speaking on behalf of the council, yes.
Much, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Agnew did come before the council at our January meeting, and this property does have a little bit of history. It used to be owned by Justin Green's brother, and when it was the ceramic palace, and it had numerous complaints, code violations, and everything under the sun. Now, Justin has purchased the property and has torn down the old ceramic palace, and we're in a new age, but there was a lot of skepticism at the council regarding just this property because it's been such a, had such a history. But, and we don't have a definite site plan, that was one of the issues. We talked about whether there should be any kind of driveway on Aspen, which is the residential street. I think there was a general feeling that there shouldn't be a driveway there. There is now with the old configuration, but I think that would be part of the shielding that would need to be done. But anyway, the council did approve the rezone, but they did insist on a public hearing site plan review because we don't know what's going to go in there, and a lot of times the devil is in the details with regard to this development, the same things that you have brought up in terms of buffering and driveways and shielding. So the council did want an opportunity to look at this again and have a, and have a public hearing on the, when a site plan is put together. The other provision is that we wanted to have something done within three years, 36 months, so that the property isn't just sitting vacant forever. It's just kind of a, sort of a half hole in the wall, or hole in the ground right now. And so anyway, but it was, there was general agreement that this is, that this kind of property was subject, would be subject to a rezone, and I think it was looked at as kind of a housekeeping measure. Thank you.
All right, we have a couple of questions in queue, so please stay there. Ms. Dean?
Through the Chair, my questions are of staff. Could you tell us what the buffers are required for this particular zoning? And I'm imagining they're wondering about where it butts up to the R2M zoning next to it. How deep do those buffers have to be, and what do they have to consist of? And if you could let us know what that would be? Thank you.
Through the Chair, Ms. Dean, it's 10-foot of buffer landscaping.
And is that part of the site plan review process on determining what that vegetation will be?
Per the zoning code, it's required with, just based on the zoning, and the, I'll just turn to the landscaping. Let's see, 10-foot minimum of, it's an average of 10-foot planting bed, not less than eight feet. Evergreen trees, a minimum of five feet with a ratio of height to spread of no less than 5 to 3, and deciduous, a minimum of eight feet in height, 1 and 1/2 inch caliper with no more than 50% deciduous. Shrubs, a minimum of 18 inches, so there'll be three shrubs to every tree. That's the majority of what it says.
What about, what about a fence? Is that required?
It is not.
It is not required. Would it be possible to add that as a requirement to this rezone, that a fence be installed to block the neighborhood from the lights from the parking lot?
I believe that that would be a special limitation that the Commission could add, requiring it, yeah, it appeared that the applicant, the applicant's representative, Mr. Steve Agnew, was okay with providing it, but you may be able to respond to that.
And one more question regarding the fence. If we did decide to ask for a fence, shouldn't we specify the type of fence, the height of fence, et cetera?
Yes, it'd be an eight-foot side obscuring fence along the, whatever, if that's the south, southwest, southeast lot boundary.
And to the community council representative, what do you think of the suggestions the city will require when this does become B3, that they will require that 10-foot deep buffer? Are you comfortable with that?
We'd always like to have more, but if that's what's required, it kind of depends on what it is. I mean, 10 feet can be enough if it's...
When it comes to the site plan review, you had also asked for a site plan review. They will have one, but we won't see it on planning and zoning unless it's a 40,000-foot or larger building, if I'm not mistaken. And if it's smaller, it's just an administrative site plan review, and if staff could step in and clarify for me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's the direction it goes in. So if staff can clarify for me.
Through the Chair, Ms. Dean, thank you. The type of review depends on the type of use that goes in. There are some uses that would be what we call permitted uses, which would only go through a zoning plan review through the building permit process, although the 10-foot buffer landscaping requirement would be noticed or required through that process. Other uses may require an administrative site plan review. Other uses may require either a public hearing site plan review or a conditional use before this body. It all depends on what the property owner desires to develop the site with.
Does that clarify for you?
Yes, but that's exactly the problem. We didn't have a plan to look at, so that's why we wanted to have another shot at it later on, when there's something definite being proposed.
And unfortunately, when you build a building, you put it out for rent, and you don't know who your tenants necessarily are going to be. You try to build a facility that's going to be headed in a particular direction, but they don't always have control totally over who approaches them to rent. So it may trigger a conditional use permit or something like that possibly sounds like. So it doesn't sound like a site plan review at this point in time is in the cards that we know for sure. It could still happen. Does that help you?
It helps to hear it. It doesn't really help in terms of managing what's going to be on that property.
Mr. Spring?
Yes, through the Chair, Mr. Auth. Well, I didn't understand what your concern was about the access to Aspen. Were you, were they in favor of access to Aspen or against that?
I think it was generally against, so that the traffic would be coming on Spinard Road instead of coming through the neighborhoods to get to the property.
Okay. I, question to staff, is there any comment regarding the property, the more desirable access to this property, Aspen or Spinard Road?
Yeah, Mr. Spring, thank you for the question. I'd have to go back and see if Traffic commented on that. Because this was a review of appropriateness of the zoning and not a site plan review, I don't think that we'll see anything in this packet that addresses driveways. The Official Streets and Highways Plan discourages, you know, curb cuts, new curb cuts and driveways to collector streets or greater. Spinard Road is one of those. Traffic had no comment on the rezone. Thank you. I'm not a traffic engineer, but it seems to me that the, that the driveway to Aspen that exists is not going to negatively affect the neighborhood because directly across the street from that continues to be commercial. It's B3 along Spinard Road, and so it's, for commercial traffic to go down Aspen, they would have to drive past the site, turn around, and drive back. I mean, it's not like it's halfway down the block. It's abutting Spinard Road.
Through the Chair? Yeah, I've heard complaints before about Aspen being a cut-through street, but it is a collector, I believe. No?
No, it's a local road. Well, I don't have the...
It is a local road, okay.
I don't have the OS and HP in front of me, but, oh, I know that I looked it up. It's in the report. It's defined in the report.
Okay, and there is an existing driveway on Spinard currently?
There is.
Of driveway access onto Spinard?
There is, but Mr. Agnew would be able to tell us if he intends to eliminate that. I think he said that he was going to keep it.
There is a driveway, so they have a driveway permit already in place on Spinard and probably Aspen.
Yes, but I think that through the building permit review, when he applies to build a new office building, that they have to consult with DOT. Again, we happen to have DOT with us. I'm kind of putting him on the spot, but you could ask questions at DOT if you want to.
Through the Chair, I actually don't know this site, but to state route, I don't have any information on this site, so. Are you done, Mr. Spring? Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. I have a comment for Mr. Auth, and then a question for staff. You know, our job here is to sort of, you know, juggle and balance these different issues, and what we're trying not to do, I think, especially in light of the fact that we've gone through a seven or eight-year-plus-year code rewrite, is to make every situation have to go through a separate site plan unless that's sort of the use that it is. We balance that against sort of what we, what we see in our adopted plans, and usually in front of us, we have a map that doesn't, doesn't actually get mapped in one specific plan, let alone two, which this one has been sort of touched on. And so our issue here is going to be, you know, generally the traditional use, as well as looking at where these plans sort of recognize the realistic line would have gone, and I think, I think my inclination is to, even though I know the frustration is always to, let's get in and do a site plan review, I think we also have to strike that balance and hope that some of the minimal regulations that we put on it will result in good design if we have the right rules in place. So it's a, we've heard, I think, the council's concerns, and are going to have to weigh whether we indicate this needs to be some other threshold, whether it's a special limitation requiring an administrative site plan review, a public site plan review, or just a by-right code situation. And I think, you know, that's basically what we're here to decide. On your comment related to timing, I think I'd ask, I have a question for staff. Mr. Auth asked for, you know, a timeline of 36 months, and I know one of the standards for a rezone is to evaluate whether development is imminent, I think, looking to not just sort of speculatively rezone properties. That said, is it common to put time limitations on these sorts of things to make sure that that imminence is in fact there?
No, it's not common for the Commission to put a requirement that development occur within a certain time period, otherwise the rezoning reverts. That's not common. Mr. Agnew would be able to address the question and the timeliness of their development, but this rezoning is actually what's holding up their development. They've already done as much as they can do to this point, demolishing the building, but they're working, they've stated that they intend to build as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Your excuse, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to testify? Anyone else at all? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Auth, A-U-T-H, and good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My husband and I have owned a home just blocks away from this place for 27 years, and we're also both very active in our community council for about 25. And we've had a lot of dealings with this property, and certainly would be very happy for it to be redeveloped in a way that would enhance the neighborhood. It was a real problem with code enforcement and other municipal agencies. In the 1990s, I was told by somebody in the muni that the muni had put in $100,000 of resources in code enforcement, fire, police, and so on. So obviously, it would be a good thing to see this happen. However, as somebody who's testified many times in front of not this body, but other commissions, there has been a history of redevelopment on Spinard Road that has not helped the community and not been the way that either the West Anchorage District Plan, the current one, or the Spinard Road redevelopment... Road redevelopment plan was. They were very much in favor of B3 and improving the commercial area, but it's taken a toll on the residential. And if you notice, this property did have R2M. It was a house that the people that ran the Spinard Coffee Land or Spinard Coffee lived in. So it was a residence. And we're losing residential all over Spinard. There's a lot of redevelopment and unfortunately changed it to B3. And we're on a corridor that is served by the bus. There's a lot of cars. It's a main conduit from the airport. So it is something that we'd like to see people living along it. And I just want you to consider two things. One is that there was a time that the commission had a sunset clause on a redevelopment on a trailer court across the street from the Harley-Davidson. The people failed to build the hotel that they intended to do within one year, and the rezone expired. The other is that there was a hotel that was put on the Frontage Road on International that abuts up to Breeze Wood. And if you've ever gone down that street, you realize that the buffer between the hotel and the neighborhood is almost nonexistent. The lights are probably 30 feet tall. The caliper of the trees is still, even after all these years, it's been a decade, are probably still two-inch caliper. So when you talk about light pollution or things like that, please consider the long-term effect on our neighborhood. And I appreciate this time of talking to you. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Does anyone else wish to testify? Anyone else at all? Sir, you have seven minutes and some seconds to reply.
Just real briefly, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I would be willing and able to commit to the screening fence either by SL or whatever vehicle that you would impose. You know, we want to break ground this spring. It's our goal. But we've seen, I think, in the last few years that it is a difficult economy at times, and you can't make any predictions. So it is our goal, you know, it makes nobody's, it's in nobody's financial interest to leave the property in a vacant condition, not earning. It's in our interest to go ahead, and that's what we plan to do. And then finally, as to the driveway, yes, there is a curb cut and a driveway in place on Spinard Road. We would continue to use that driveway. It is not our plan or goal to put a driveway on Aspen, but plans do change. And if we were to put a driveway on Aspen, I'm sure that the traffic engineer would review that as the ordinary review that they would apply to any project. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions at all? I have one question for staff. Is this application under the new Title 21 or the old Title 21?
Mr. Chair, it's through the old Title 21.
On the staff analysis, maybe we better have a new box there for old Title 21. The public hearing is now closed. What is the wish of the body?
May I, just a clarification, please?
We close the public hearing, sir. I'm sorry.
May we direct a question to staff?
Staff, what's your thoughts? Can the applicant redirect a question to you?
The public hearing's been closed. If you want to recall him and let him ask me a question, that's fine.
Okay, we will recall and let you ask the question, sir.
Just a clarification. The screening fence that's in the code, I think it's six, not eight, but we'll comply with whatever's in the code. It's a knit, but I believe it is six.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed, closed. Have a motion. Ms. Dean, do you care to speak to your motion?
In the matter of 2014-001, I move to approve the rezone of the property from R2M to B3.
We have a second. You wish to continue with your discussion on your motion?
Yes, I would like to approve this particular rezone. It makes sense for it to be adjoining the other property. It's tough to develop any size of a structure on the first lot due to the lack of parking, so the parking is necessary to come from this lot that was zoned R2M. I would also like to propose a special limitation of a screening fence, a sided screening fence of eight foot high, and I am open to discussion on that.
Can I clarify? Is this part of your main motion or is that a second motion?
I don't want my motion to fail, so I would make it a separate. Thank you.
So we take up the main motion first, but Mr. Spring has a comment to make.
I'll be supporting the motion. There's times when I think it's appropriate to have a site plan review and other times when I think it doesn't really serve the public or the commission to take their time in doing such a thing. In this case, I'm happy with the amendment for a fence. I think that resolves my main concern. There might be other concerns regarding lighting, but the code now, I think, addresses lighting pretty adequately. And I'm not really concerned that there's anything we could do about that during a site plan review. The driveways could be an issue, but I'm comfortable with the driveway on Aspen. I think that would be just fine. I don't think it would cause any real traffic hazards. I would probably prefer to see the driveway on Spinard eliminated because it's, all these turning movements on these arterial streets are a safety problem. But if there's already a driveway permit there, permitted there, it's doubtful we could really take that out. So my conclusion is that there's not really much we can do with the site plan review, I don't think, even though I think it would make the community council happy, obviously.
Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Chair, could you first clarify? Does that constitute a second to the second motion made by Ms. Dean?
Well, no. Well, I've got, Ms. Dean is the main motion and seconded by Mr. Walker.
But then she had a second motion that's on the table right now.
I didn't take it as a second motion. I thought it was the main motion is what we were discussing.
No, you would deal with the most recent motion first.
Okay, but I didn't think we'd gotten there yet. Do we want to have a, I think we've got to take up a second motion regarding the fence first. And so if you want to do that, do that now.
So I move to add an amendment to the motion for an eight-foot-sided screening fence on the southeast side? Or would that be the northeast side of the lot? Southeast side of the lot. And I would like to add that as an amendment, and I was hoping for a second.
We have a second with Mr. Spring. Do we have any comments on that? Mr. Robinson?
Yes, through the chair. I will be supporting this second motion as well as the original motion. I think the second motion clarifies what the intent of the, I forget the name of it, the Spinard Community District Development Strategy sort of laid out is that we consider as these rezonings take place over time, as development happens, that we should consider proper buffering and screening while we do it. And I think this does so. I think in addition, if I may speak to the main motion, I believe it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, both the 1986 Spinard Plan and the West Anchorage District Plan. I think the rezone facilitates appropriate redevelopment and that redevelopment of underdeveloped lands or when you replace dilapidated buildings, you are often left with properties that by definition conform to the existing code, which is in itself an improvement over a lot of what exists along Spinard Road. I think this area is one of vibrant mixed-use developments. I think when you have commercial and residential next to each other, you can always have some conflicts. At the same time, I think that's what makes for an interesting neighborhood. And I do think that the size of the lots themselves do restrict really high-intensity uses along Spinard. Finally, I think that it meets the standards of rezonings. The petitioner has indicated that redevelopment is in the works. It's imminent, and I think this is obviously a step that needs to happen. I think also on the notion of residential land, I think unfortunately you're dealing with a non-conforming residential lot that itself would be difficult, if not impossible, to redevelop. So I think all those things I'll be supporting.
Any other comments? We're going to try the machines. We're voting on the motion for the fence only. Please vote. That motion passes. Can I hit reset voting? How do I get back to the main motion? Okay, and back to the main motion. This is regarding approval of 2014-001. Please vote. That motion also passes. We will now take about a 10-minute recess, and then we will come back to, I think the next one we come back to is Three Bears.
Thank you.
Commission is back in session. Case 2014-011. Do we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The petitioner requests a large retail establishment site plan review in accordance with Title 21. The proposed site plan shows a 50,000-square-foot building for a grocery store, liquor store, and a tenant rental unit. It's likely to be a bank. The site plan also shows an eight-pump gas station and an associated kiosk with the gas station. There's an existing cell tower on the southeast side of the property, and then there's another one north of the property as well. The department's recommending approval of this large retail establishment site plan review, subject to conditions 1 through 13 on page nine and 10 of your packet. On page nine, conditions 1 and 2 are standard. Condition number 3, provide an eight-foot-tall sight obscuring fence to screen the trash compactor. I've spoken with the petitioner about that. They verbally agreed to that. Revised the site plan, condition number four, revised the site plan to move the sewer pressure line closer to the building so that it does not encroach into the highway screening landscaping. The petitioner's also agreed to that. Showing, condition number five, showing a bike rack on the site plan. That's been agreed, too. Showing grocery cart return locations on the site plan. They've agreed to that as well. Provide sign details for the freestanding sign. They have no problems with that. They expressed none. Condition 8 is to provide a lighting plan to mitigate negative impacts on adjacent uses. Condition 10, resolve with planning improvements to the west facade, meeting the aesthetic characteristics in the large retail establishment sections P1 and P2. Condition 11, deleting from the site plan the existing driveway within the DOT right-of-way along the south boundary of the site. The remaining two conditions are standard conditions. Be happy to answer any questions. The petitioner's prepared a presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Any questions at all? Saying none. Petitioner, would you come forward and make a case, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. My name is Laquita Chimalowski. I'm with Enterprise Engineering.
Please spell that.
Sure. My first name is Laquita, L-A-Q-U-I-T-A, and Chimalowski, C-H-M-I-E-L-O-W-S-K-I. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner, C3, and Three Bears. Tonight I have with me representatives from Clotter Architects, who is the architect for the project, Criterion, who's the developer and contractor, and then representatives with Three Bears. As Frances stated, this is a 50,000-square-foot grocery and liquor store with associated gas station and kiosk. The site's bounded by residential and business to the north, and then there's a cell tower to the east, and then there's a cell tower that's actually on the site just to the south of the building. It's important to note that the elevation of the building is approximately nine feet lower than the elevation of the existing cell tower to the south of the building. And the highway is another, is approximately 13 feet lower than the elevation of the cell tower. So the south side of the building will be screened from the highway because of the natural berm that's there already and that we're maintaining as part of the development. As Frances mentioned, to the east is another existing cell tower. Acclutina has provided a letter in your package that it's unlikely that they'll develop that lot in the future because of topography constraints and the size of the parcel. The two lots that are to the north that are residential are currently under a rezone and a replat to be zoned for B3. But since those aren't being completed prior to this hearing, we have pulled the building back 25 feet from the property line, and we are providing buffer landscaping where we abut the residential. There's also a 30-foot right-of-way take that's part of this project, and it's my understanding the replat for those residential lots will also have a 30-foot right-of-way associated with it. The condition number 10 in your packet about the west elevation, we do think, we do have, think there might have been some oversight on what we're actually doing on the west side. So with that, I will let Braxton Cox with Clotter Architects explain what we're doing on the west elevation.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Braxton Cox, C-O-X. And I just wanted to kind of walk you through the west elevation, which is the elevation that fronts on Birchwood Loop. We have created a split-face CMU wainscot, which provides quite a bit of texture at the personal scale. It's a varying color than the insulated metal panels. The insulated metal panels are textured. We varied in colors. The tan is the main field color. We've got an evergreen that, as you can see in the large evergreen fields, those panels are actually recessed to provide some just visual interest at the pedestrian scale. We have also included full glass doors. The sliding entry doors at the main entrance are 12 feet wide. They contain full glass side lights on each side. They also have a transom window above them to allow some natural light there at the entry. There's a window in the smaller retail area on the northern side of the west, northern end of the western facade. We have also added a canopy that extends 10 feet, projects 10 feet off of the face of the building that covers these two entries. And we've added an accent band that projects out, as you can see, on the southern end of the western facade. The mountain scene is actually somewhat three-dimensional. It projects out. The smaller mountain is more set out towards the parking lot area, and then it steps back, and that's where the signage will be placed for the building. And I will turn it back over to Laquita.
So with that, we'd like to retain the rest of our time for questions and rebuttal.
Thank you. You have five minutes left for that. Questions from the commission? Mr. Walker? Mr. Walker?
So you mentioned something that there was an oversight on the facade, and I'm assuming that what you were referring to is the section P1 in here from the staff that basically states that the standard is not met. Is this canopy that's underneath the mountain scene, was that an addition to what has been provided to us?
No, this was what was in the original packet.
Okay. So your reference to an oversight, can you clarify what that meant?
So I think there was a misunderstanding that the panels along the front, the green panels, were recessed and that we had projections with the banding and with the canopy.
Thank you.
Mr. Strike?
Yes. You mentioned a kiosk. Was that tied to the fuel dispensary?
Yes. Actually, I think I have that. So down here at the south end of the area, there's, this is the fueling area here, and then there's a kiosk right there associated with the fueling.
Is this a, like a key-card kiosk for commercial, or is this going to be manned?
Yeah, it'll be manned. I think it's similar to like what you see at Fred Meyer's where it's manned, and they have a few, you know, you can buy water or soda there.
Mr. Spring?
Yes. I believe that the site plan reviews require some type of exterior meeting place where you can congregate outside the building as well as inside. Do you, how does this site plan meet that?
So we've actually provided a picnic area out here to the, along the north side of the site, and there'll be, so there'll be a picnic table and a gravel area and pathway that leads from the sidewalk out to that location. And then inside the building, there is a coffee kiosk, and there'll be some tables and chairs where people can gather.
Any other questions from staff? Or any other questions for the commission? I have one question for staff. Was this submitted under the new or the old?
The old code.
Thank you.
Question to staff.
Questions for staff?
Yes, sorry. Staff, I see that the DOT is here and the traffic engineer. Obviously, there's a question about the traffic impact analysis that hasn't been addressed yet. I was wondering if you had any information on that.
Through the chair, this is Scott Thomas. Yeah, DOT traffic. I live close by, so I stopped in. We have accepted the traffic impact analysis through the state code rules, and a letter was given to the city with comments on the traffic impact analysis.
Through the chair. And what were the recommendations?
Through the chair. The traffic impact analysis was performed with a consulting engineering firm, and they recommended some turn lanes at the site driveway, right turn lane in, turn lanes at the freeway ramp. And when the DOT accepted it, we did say that in our letter to the city that the driveway permit would be next, and we would come to some agreement on construction of access. There should be pedestrian access to and from the main road, and for secondary access, the way the site plans laid out, McKinley Avenue would give them additional circulation. It's not critical to the traffic impact analysis, but we support two points of access.
So I guess my basic, my final question is, does any of those conditions of the traffic impact analysis affect the site plan in terms of circulation and parking?
Through the chair, not, not conditions of acceptance don't affect the site plan, but we did recommend that preserving access to McKinley Avenue and actually providing access to McKinley Avenue would improve their front aisle access. That traffic impact analysis only requires that the traffic performance is level of service C or mitigated, and they've done that in the, they've outlined mitigation in the traffic impact analysis such that it's acceptable.
So the driveway that's shown on the site plan will be, is acceptable, and it's a DOT?
Yes, through the chair, yes. And there are details to be worked out on the driveway dimensions.
Mr. Strike?
Yes, just an observation, looking at your drawing on the top, you don't show the three over bay doors, docking doors, that would be a budding on the right side. How does that parallel to your site map? Because it looks like it's going to butt out to the...
So you don't see the...
Fuel, fuel is the three area. We don't quite see, I don't quite see that. Or is it, is it set back?
It is, yeah. That's why you don't see it in the view here on the top.
You can see it here in the elevation.
So it's set back in the fuel shop. Got it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Does anyone else choose to testify? Anyone at all? Please come forward and state your name.
Hi, I'm Jill Flanders Crosby, and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Birchwood Community Council.
Are you speaking on behalf of the council?
Yes, ma, yes, sir. Sorry, yes, sir, I am.
Thank you.
So I'm speaking on behalf of the Birchwood Council, but I will not be long at all. So the Birchwood Council is pretty much in support of this project. I think neighbors are excited to see this come into the area. The overwhelming concern, however respectfully, to DOT does remain the traffic issue, and we understand that there are certain conditions that DOT says this is what you need to do, and Three Bears needs to comply with that. We do, however respectfully, ask that as you are continuing to work out this traffic issue, that you take a good, hard, careful look at those peak hours with the church, with that Pilot's Grill Road, with people coming in and off, on and off ramps of the Glen Highway, that there is a potential, and also with the fact that you've got that very sharp curve on Birchwood Loop North, and you come around that and all of a sudden, like, whoa, you know, there is, there is the Three Bears area, to really keep considering this, especially in relationship not to what you see on the day-to-day, let's look at it level, but the peak traffic level times. I have, or our council has been informed that, well, maybe the answer to this down the road would be the, to improve Birchwood Loop North, but there is no, if you want to straighten out that curve, it's going to require buying properties on the south side of Birchwood Loop North or eminent domain, and that is a very contentious issue in our neighborhood. So that's the only thing that I offer just for, to be on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Robinson?
Yes, through the chair, Ms. Flanders Crosby. Just a question as to whether the aesthetics of the building, you know, ever came up at the community council. I mean, these things end up being, you know, we have a big-box ordinance that's a fairly subjective review, that you heard the petitioner say that they feel like they meet the intent of it. And I think as these types of buildings have played out in different parts of town, they've sort of taken different paths, and so I was wondering if it came up at all in your community.
It absolutely did, and our community council did not have any objections. They felt that their questions were answered in terms of the look of the store. They felt the questions were answered in terms of the light, the light pollution. That was an issue. They felt okay with that. We did ask about making sure, because the liquor store aspect and the aesthetics and, you know, no outside signs, the council felt very good about that. There was a little bit of concern about the landscape plan, but I don't think it was anything that was of any serious concern to the council.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you. Through the chair. I'm very familiar with the site. I lived just up the road, a little ways myself, and I share your concerns about the traffic problems, the traffic challenges, not just in peak hours, but I think in generals, we have an emerging town center cluster beginning to happen at the north Birchwood area.
Right.
What would the community council see as perhaps some intermediate steps to address some of the traffic issues?
Thank you. One other thing that's also going to increase traffic is the gravel pit area that is now finished out by the airport that's going to start bringing more commercial traffic, we assume. I'm sure that Mr. Arneson might be able to address that, how much will be trained, how much will be trucked out. The question was raised, the famous, not in our neighborhood, roundabout. The council wasn't particularly happy with the idea of a roundabout. What was thrown forward was the potentiality of a stoplight right there of the membership in attendance. There were two objections to a stoplight. I think just because the idea of a stoplight on that road would be a problem, but that was thrown out as a possible mitigation factor. But I think we would have to kind of wait and see what's really going to hap, there weren't a lot of easy answers or solutions. It's a tough, it's a tough location in terms of traffic, really tough, especially because of the church and all that traffic that is dumping out of the church on Sundays and Wednesdays, and I think the church also has a school there of some kind. So it, there were no easy answers, just a lot of concern.
Any other questions? Questions at all? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Any other testimony on this issue? Any at all? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. You have, I think, three minutes for rebuttal, if you choose to use it.
So I just wanted to clarify on the traffic impact analysis. I think it's important to note, as we did that study, we used a 3.2% growth rate for the traffic that's going to be generated over the next 20 years, which is a fairly conservative number. We also had traffic counts from existing Three Bears stores, so we used those instead of trip generations from the ITE manuals, which were, again, conservative. And the mitigation that we're proposing, or has been proposed in the TIA are looking at things like right-hand turn lanes into the site and then having a right and left turn lane out of the driveway, and those mitigation measures show that they meet adequate level of service.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions at all? Now I can close the public hearing. I got out sequence. What's the wish of the body? Mr. Robinson?
In the matter of case 2014-011, public hearing site plan review for a large retail establishment for AMC 2150-320, move to approve.
Do we have a second? Mr. Spring? Comments? Would you care to speak to your motion?
Well, I, you know, I think, I think I was inclined to delve a little deeper into the aesthetics, and I think hearing from the community council and staff's willingness to, I believe, still work on that condition unless they feel like it's been satisfied here tonight, strikes me as having satisfied the aesthetic thing, which, which is often the most difficult to put your finger on during these big-box reviews. I think that said, I believe they adhere to all other conditions under, requirements under 2150-320. Those that they either do not or partly do not, staff has asked that they resolve those issues. So with that, I'll be supporting the motion.
And I assume your motion includes the department recommendations on pages nine and 10?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It does.
Any other comments before we vote? We'll try this thing again. That motion passes.
Mr. Chair, may I request some findings in this case?
Okay, that, good catch. Mr. Robinson?
Well, I believe I indicated that it satisfied the standards in 2150-320, which are the public hearing site plan review, big-box requirements, and I touched on the aesthetic piece. So unless you want me to read each and every one of them, I believe I've made the findings that I was prepared to make.
Mr. Spring, a sec. Do you have any?
No, I believe there's, it beats the intent of the GAC group, comprehensive plan, I believe, for that area, to serve as a retail center for the Birchwood area, so I think it meets that requirement.
Thank you. I think you have your findings. The next case before us is case 2014-010. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This case is a proposed amendment to the new Title 21, and this amendment would do two things. One, it would amend the use-specific standards for the use hotel slash motel in section 2105-050 J4B3I, which would indicate that the requirement that motel-style development be on a, or have access from a collector or greater street would not apply in the GRST 1 or GRST 2 zoning districts. Those are the Girdwood Resort 1 and 2 zoning districts. And the second, I'm sorry, it's an arterial or greater, and the second amendment would be to amend table 2109-2 by combining the uses hotel and motel in the same way that those uses are combined in chapter 5, thus bringing chapters 5 and chapters 9 more, to be more consistent with each other, and then eliminating the use motel. The definitions of these uses, both in the old code and the new code, are provided to you, and this amendment did go before the Girdwood Land Use Committee and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. The Land Use Committee voted 13 to 1 to support or to not object to this proposal, and the Board of Supervisors voted 4 to 0 to not object to this proposal. A letter from the Board of Supervisors is attached in your packet on page 7. Given that there's been no community objection, the planning department recommends approval of the ordinance.
Do we have an applicant on this, or?
No, the applicant is the municipality. So that's me.
Okay. Now, this is a public hearing, so I guess I open it to the public hearing, and anyone except Mr. Potter is welcome to come up and speak. Please introduce yourself and spell your last name, sir.
Mr. Turin, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter with Alliaska. Not necessarily the applicant, the city truly was the applicant. We just were the ones that pointed out a couple of glitches in chapter 9 and its corresponding references to the primary code in Title 21. And I believe this is really housekeeping with the recognition that GRST 1 and 2 are the limited areas that this would come into play, and they are the resort base at Alliaska Resort. What it came out of was a hybrid-type motel-hotel design that we felt was a hotel in definition, going back to Title 21. It would have been called a motel, although only because it had an option of entering the units, because they were single-loaded, so you didn't have an interior walkway. And it was an unusual deal where you could go up an elevator and get to the outdoor terraces that led into the rooms, and the rooms had a major view going out to the ski hill. And it was just an unusual situation and one that I don't think anybody anticipated when they did chapter 9.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Potter?
I do.
I've got one question first. Did your clarifications get resolved?
This will resolve the issue at hand. This will resolve the issue at hand, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. Through the chair, either for Mr. Potter or staff. You know, the staff report says that Stafford anecdotally that motel motel-style development was not desirable due to aesthetic reasons. What are the, what if any are their design requirements in those resort zoning districts that ensure that even though this sort of uses a motel, that the actual design meets the intent of the resort area?
Every activity within the GRST 1 has to go through a development plan. Everything within the GRST 2 has to go through an area master plan and then a specific development master plan. So it will be reviewed.
Thank you.
Mr. Spring?
And just to follow up, and also site plan review, it's a conditional use, right?
It will be a conditional use.
Well, that it will get a chance to look at it then.
Any other questions? Any questions at all? I guess I can close, I can close the public hearing now. What's the wish of the body? Mr. Robinson?
I don't know if that was mine or left over from before, but I'm happy to make an affirmative motion. In the matter of case 2014-010, amendment to Title 21 to change the use-specific standards for the hotel motel relating to the GRST 1 and 2 districts, and amending Table 2109-2, move to approve as recommended by staff.
Can we have a second, please? Mr. Spring? Do we need any findings?
Well, I think, simply put, it's been described as a housekeeping item. Perhaps it's a little more than that. It does allow a use that wasn't previously considered in the GRST 1 and 2 areas, but I think noting that the Girdwood Land Use Committee and Girdwood Board of Supervisors supported this, and that it generally still requires a number of entitlement requirements to go through to full development, I fully support it.
Do we have any objection? Seeing and hearing no objection, it passes. I believe that completes our regular agenda. Mr. Spring, you wanted to make a comment earlier, and then I'll get up. Ms. McConnell suddenly kicked in on my machine. You want, is it on this motion or is it something else? Okay, Mr. Spring.
Thought she was going to get on me again for my findings, actually.
First time she popped up there all night. Yeah, we, just to note for the record, we got a document in the packet regarding the strategy for developing context-sensitive transportation projects, which we requested the other day during the discussion on the West Diamond Boulevard project. And just wanted to note a couple of things in it. One is, let's see now, what page is this on? Those two things. On page 3 of 16, there's a requirement, appears, that the review will occur annually of the strategy, this context-sensitive solution strategy, by compiling the post-construction evaluations related to the project development process, suggestions arising from the evaluations, providing these to the guidance team to recommend changes to the strategy. The municipality will report back to the Planning and Zoning Commission annually after adoption of the strategy, to provide overview of implementation processes and describe what worked and what did not work and what should be changed. And, of course, I've only been on the commission one year, I think almost exactly one year. I don't remember any review, and I don't know, I would like to ask the other commissioners if they've had a chance to review the process, and maybe that would be kind of a vehicle for the commission to resolve some of the issues we've been having with road projects, and maybe...
We have a director's luncheon on Thursday. Maybe that'd be a good time to bring that question up.
Or, I mean, we don't, we shouldn't have to request a review. It should be automatically done. So we, I think you're right, maybe just remind the director that this is a requirement of a policy that was adopted by the Municipality of Anchorage Assembly, and that we would request that it be followed through.
That's kind of like a conditional use without any enforcement ability.
That's another pet peeve, okay, but. And secondly, this is something that Mr. Ferguson pointed out, and it's just a comment regarding, which page was that on?
10.
Mr. Ferguson, number 10, regarding the role of Planning and Zoning Commission, which states in the middle of, towards the bottom of this first column, that the commission will serve as the dispute resolution panel should the municipality and stakeholders reach an impasse. For example, if there is a difference of opinion between the functional design and what the community wants, the commission will resolve the dispute. And I think there's been a couple of cases where I've been involved with so far where that might apply, although, well, I'll take it back, one that I think, there's, I think the commission reviewed the Golden View Drive project before I got on the commission, and in that case, it seems like there was an obvious role where the commission should have been serving as the mediation body, and where the decisions of the commission probably should have been carried forward without being rejected by the PM and E.
Golden View and Powder Valley Road, both would fall under that category.
Well, oh, so you think Powder Valley would too?
Yeah. And Mount Air. I'd forgotten Mount Air.
I don't believe, I'm not sure the West Diamond would, because I'm not sure that there was a lot of neighborhood opposition to it. It was mostly commission opposition to the PM and E, the engineers.
There is opposition to certain cases.
Oh.
And they have a yield.
So that might also fall in that category. So I think we got more power, more than we were led to believe, where if this ordinance is a policy, well, the policy needs to be followed then. And it was adopted by ordinance, whereas, of course, the design review criteria, the design criteria hasn't been adopted by anybody. So maybe we should assert our rights, maybe as, maybe something we should do.
I found it very interesting. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note that since the last time you, the commission, reviewed committee assignments, you've had three new members join the commission. So I'm not suggesting you do this this evening, especially considering you have two missing members, but please do be thinking about committee assignments, and perhaps we can address this at the next meeting or a meeting soon. Additionally, there's a P&amp;Z representative that sits on the AMAT's Air Quality Committee, and for some time now, that's been Commissioner Dean, and it's my understanding that Commissioner Dean has stepped down from that responsibility. So the AMAT's Air Quality Committee is looking for a new P&amp;Z representative to that committee. It meets quarterly, so four times a year. They are an advisory committee to the AMAT's process, to the AMAT's Technical Committee and Policy Committee, and so they are looking for a new P&amp;Z representative. Thank you.
Robinson, are you volunteering? Mr. Chair? Your name, your name came up here.
I had another comment, but as I move to adjourn, but if you want to discuss committee assignments now, that's fine. I'm not...
Mr. Spring? I'd be happy to volunteer, but I have a question first, though.
What?
Do they serve lunch?
Through the chair, Mr. Apparently so.
And who provides lunch usually?
I can't answer that question.
Subway? Count me in. Count me in. I'll be glad to serve.
We're a cheap body. Mr. Robinson, did you make a motion?
Well, but before I did, I just wanted to commend you on steering the ship tonight. I think you did a more than adequate job, and I, for one, should anything happen to Mr. Mulcahy next week, will be the first to elect you chair to steer us through the South High School site plan.
If I could get done at nine o'clock for South High, you guys would be lined up to kiss.
So with that, I move to adjourn.
Do I have any objection? We adjourn. Nine o'clock, gang. I think that's...